Meeting in order. We'd like to invite everyone to rise and join with us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have roll call please.
Ken Callier.
Here.
Craig Koshaw.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Cullen-Camp.
Here.
Wiley, clear.
Here. Thank you. We've all emailed a copy of the minutes from our April 4th meeting. You had a chance to review the minutes. Motion to approve them.
So.
Matt motion, Wiley second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same. Thank you. Hey Bill, can we have Melissa? Y'all know that we were awarded that hometown collaboration initiative award from Okra here a few months back and we've had our community forum, we've done our community survey, we've been having a lot of meetings and we're getting to a point where we're gonna have to be building a, or choosing a building block which is basically a project. And if Melissa would, she's gonna kinda give us a synopsis and a rundown of where we're at.
The HCI process has been very involved for the city as well as our volunteers that have been on our HCI committee. And to give you an idea, about 600 volunteer hours have already been put into this process. So we're very grateful for all of our community members that are coming out for kinda marathon three-hour meetings and being a part of the HCI process. Our next session is session six and that is tomorrow. That's a big one for us, that's the one where we select our building block. There's three building blocks we'll be able to choose from. It's economy, leadership, or quality of place. And what the committee will do tomorrow is take information from the data on the community, from our community survey, and from the community forum. They're gonna take all that feedback and decide what do we wanna learn next for our community and we're gonna choose one of those three building blocks. Depending on which one we choose, it'll put us on a path to choosing a project in one of those areas that this group or an expanded group in the community will take on. So again, we're so thankful for our community volunteers, they've put in, like I said, about 600 total hours and tomorrow will be a big day for us if we choose our building block.
Good. A few people in this room have been involved in the HCI meetings and they've been really a pleasure to be part of. A lot of good discussion, a lot of good average Joe people that are on that committee. And Melissa, you've done a really good job as far as, Melissa adds all the little tidbits to make these meetings more welcoming. The people from Ball State and Purdue have told me that of all the other communities they've done this at, they've never had anyone that makes them feel more welcome than Melissa. Every time we have a meeting, she'll have little centerpieces and candies and little teasers and toys and whatever. And they said, no other community's ever done that, but they appreciate how she goes over and above to make everyone feel welcome. So, thank you Melissa.
Thank you.
Jeremy? Let's start repeating some of the things we just covered in the Board of Works meeting if we could give the general public an update on Master Drive and where that project's at and where it's going.
Today, we're estimating completed storm sewer work for Master Drive. I met up with them at noon, just to kinda go over the entire project, make sure that everything was completed. They were putting in their last piece of pipe and then switching it over to just some housekeeping items that they needed to do, some stuff that needed to be picked up, some debris that needs to be picked up along the way. We did have a three-bed meeting this morning for water main replacement. Had some pretty good input from a group that was at the table discussing the project. We will open bids on that next Tuesday morning and then bring a recommendation to the May 2nd meeting for that project. So, there will be a little gap in time here with activity going on while we complete the storm sewer to the water main replacement work. So, my guys will be down there doing some little miscellaneous repairs that we found there in the project and prepping for new curbs, asphalt, water mains, street lighting. So, the project is going along.
Okay, good. While you're here, maybe between you and Tim, update us on where we're at on the Schaefer building.
I met with.
Steve.
Steve Egerton from Diggs a couple times in the last two or three weeks. Steve's been handling off this project and we've reviewed environmental documents, the building in general, what needs to happen at this point. We were working with Diggs to make sure that everything is going to be taken care of appropriately. So, things are really progressing along. We actually had a meeting with the contractor last week also while your, while Ken was in Florida. And there'll be some communication back and forth with contractor and Diggs hopefully sometime midweek this week so they can work out the little details on demolition costs associated with all that.
Remediation would probably start when? As far as the environmental stuff?
Within probably a few weeks depending on how the conversation goes with Kevin and the contractor. Cause what you really wanna see happen is with remediation, you want the remediation and the demolition to go hand in hand. Every window has to be taken out of that building so there will be additional costs as you get the remediation and.
There's asbestos in the glazing, is that right?
Yeah, it's the window glazing. There's really very minimal work that has to be done in the building to satisfy IDIM or environmental. It can really surprise you once you look at the report.
The thing says there's 81 windows with asbestos glazing, 750 square feet of trans site paneling, fans of paneling, 18 bags of asbestos pipe insulation, 30 lenial feet of asbestos pipe insulation, the building located at 101 South First.
Very, very minimal. A lot of this stuff has actually been collected over the years by previous owners and sent a file in the basement.
Yeah.
So, you know, the work's really gonna be very minimal.
One question.
What the phase one and phase two environmental that you guys said, or most of you and former Mayor Schultz had done on the property in the last three years, that's been wonderful information. We saw that remediation number drop dramatically because we went into phase two where it actually didn't testing. If we wouldn't have went into the phase two, we would be paying a lot more than what we would have without that.
Okay.
So, it's all good news. The building is not getting any better, so it would be a very good thing to have that building down here this summer.
Go ahead Craig.
Just a quick question on Master Drive out there. You say you get the sewer and they pressurize it and they're doing that check right now and then they're gonna kick off the water. You think, is there a chance we can get that thing paved this summer?
Yes.
Okay. Timeline on that?
I'm hoping to have a completion easily by the time the kids go back to school.
Okay. Looking sometime in August possibly?
Yeah, probably end of July, first part of August. That's where street lighting, curbs, driveway approaches, water, the asphalt, the whole backyard. So, basically it's gonna be a brand new street.
With new infrastructure under it?
Yeah.
I just wanted to compliment you on taking this bull by the horns and knocking this out because it was something I think the city needed really bad. And I'm glad the way that you handled it, I really think you did an exceptional job.
Thank you.
Thank you Craig. Yep. He has. Tim, how about you?
The weather's pretty cooperative.
As far as the financing element of the Schaefer building, as I told you before, the city just can't hand money over to a private developer. So, the process that we're gonna go through is to set up a revolving loan fund and use seed of revenues which we can then use in this capacity. There'll be a resolution that the council will approve next meeting and shortly after that, then the city will enter into a loan agreement with the developer. The developer will sign a promissory note and then the funds will be turned over to the developer based upon that note. Ultimately, that note will be forgiven once the developer meets certain criteria that are spelled out in the loan agreement. Those are still being fleshed out, but we discussed at the Board of Works meeting certain conditions that the city would include to assure that the Schaefer building be taken down timely, that the project itself be completed in a timely fashion, that we make sure that the expenditure use of funds are towards the artist's loft project and are spent in for appropriate expenditures, that the repurposing of the Schaefer property into a parking lot and green space be completed as well as entering into a lease agreement for the dedicated spaces for the occupants of the artist's lofts. And then finally, the conveyance to the city of the front portion of the property on the floor level or street level that would then be used by the city for whatever purposes you ultimately decide. So, those are the things that we would require in order for the developer to ultimately receive a forgiveness of the loan. So, in essence, what happens is the loan turns into a grant. Okay? So, but in turn, the city gets a number of things to its advantage. You're gonna end up with the exterior of the working space in the front part of the building done, the city would then develop the interior however you wish to use it. There's gonna be additional parking then for the unused areas of the parking that aren't gonna be needed for the artist's lofts. You get the Schaefer building down, so there's a lot of benefits to the city for the money that's being committed to this project by the city.
Thank you Tim. Any other questions or comments about the Schaefer building? Anything from the, either of the Bobs? Okay, good. Thank you. Next, if we could, let's do our ordinance on changing the alley just to our west here from one way running north to one way running south.
Actually, when I worked at the, our statute, our code, city code, there's nothing that shows the alleys from Madison Street into the parking lot going.
It doesn't show one way.
One way, nor does it off of Second Street. So, I've addressed all of the alleys in that. So, the way I worded this is that regarding the city block bordered by Monroe Street, Second Street, Madison Street, and Third Street, the north-south alley between Madison Street and Monroe Street, from Madison Street to the center of the intersection with the east-west alley between Second and Third shall be one-way north. Regarding the north-south alley between Madison Street and Monroe Street within that city block, the alley shall be one-way south from Monroe Street to the south property line of in lot number 86, which is the lot that the old city hall sits on. And then with regard to the east-west alley between Second and Third Street within that block, the alley should be one-way west from Second Street to the center of the intersection with the north-south alley between Madison and Monroe. So, in essence, Madison feeds in to the north, Monroe feeds in to the south, Second Street feeds in to the west, and then everything exits out on the Third Street and it's two-way coming off of, it's two-way in and out of Third Street.
Right, is that what you intended?
That's what we want. It's what we want.
Okay. Can we do this in short title? Are you? No, I got it.
Well, Tim, yeah, the street department's gonna have to properly sign it then.
Can we do this in short title?
Yes, please.
I didn't catch that, can you give?
No, I will not do it again.
Got about most important, Bob, you got it?
You got it.
You got it.
Basically, it's the same one, it's the one alley. You just made it all equal.
Yeah. What's the number?
We need a motion.
One?
We have to have this. One? You sure?
No. Oh, I'll find that one that we have on this year.
I don't know.
Lots of ones, revolution.
You mean we're in mid-April and this is our first ordinance?
I thought we did too. I don't know.
We have to come back next month and amend the thing?
Yeah, we'll probably have to amend it.
Okay. It's one, it's one.
No, we did, we signed the rules, we passed something on our third reading.
Did we? Barb, do you remember an ordinance passed this year?
Fellas, 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 fellas. What was it for? What, right?
I don't know. Did somebody have that website, huh? You could bring it up.
We're gonna have, let's just, for instance, that, the north and south alley that are inside the old city.
Yeah. Who'd you start?
We're having ingress in the lot from both ends.
I was in the ornate.
Ornate.
Once you're in the lot, or everybody.
I have it on.
Do not enter to go south and do not enter.
Street department's gonna have to sign it.
I'm gonna have to put another revolution on that.
So, any place that comes in, once you're in there, you're gonna have to show them that they can back out at six o'clock.
Well, I.
Right now, there's two ways out, after this, there will only be one way out. Not that difficult.
No, there isn't two ways.
Right now, you can come out to the north or you can come out to Third Street. Right now. After we pass the ordinance, the only way out will be Third Street.
Well, that's pretty much, well, okay. You're just changing the one alley, that's.
That's exactly, that's what I said, yeah. We're just changing one, that was the original intent, but when he looked and he saw the other ones weren't actually.
Well, I'm not gonna say that.
But they were an ordinance.
He's already there.
The other ones are.
Yeah.
It's gonna have to be signed properly.
Okay, we are. This is second to.
Thank you Ken.
Sure.
What did you?
It was the.
I had a, okay.
I will make a motion to place ordinance 2017-2 on its first reading by short title only. Second. Have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2017-2 in its first reading by short title only, all in favor? Aye. Oppose the same. Tim, by short title please.
Ordinance 2017-2, short title, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur which amends schedule five of chapter 77 of the Decatur Code of Ordinance of 2015 as supplemented by establishing one-way travel on portions of alleys located within the city block bordered by Monroe Street, Madison Street, Second Street, and Third Street.
That's a short title.
That's a short.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2017-2 on its first reading by short title, thank you. Second. A motion and a second to pass ordinance 2017-2 in its first reading, have roll call vote please.
Ken Callier.
Yes.
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Cullen-Camp.
Yes.
Wiley, clear.
Yes. Make motion to place ordinance 2017-2 on second reading by short title. Second. Have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2017-2 in a second reading by short title only, all in favor? Aye. Oppose the same. Tim, please.
Ordinance 2017-2, short title, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur which amends schedule five of chapter 77 of the Decatur Code of Ordinance of 2015 as supplemented by establishing one-way travel on portions of alleys located within the city block bordered by Monroe Street, Madison Street, Second Street, and Third Street.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2017-2 on second reading by short title. Second. Have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2017-2 by short title on its second reading and would have roll call vote.
Ken Callier.
Yes.
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Cullen-Camp.
Yes.
Wiley, clear.
Yes. Do we need to, do we need to time?
I do, I do table order.
Table, I would, make a motion to table ordinance 2017-2 first third final reading on our next meeting on May 2nd. Second. Have a motion and a second to table ordinance 2017-2 for its third reading by short title only or at our next scheduled meeting on May 2nd, all in favor? Aye. Oppose the same, thank you. Justin, welcome to Decatur.
Thank you.
Come on forward. This is Justin Collins, I think we all met him last year. He's with Prime Inc., he's our legal counsel out of Springfield, Missouri, I believe, right?
Yes, Springfield, Missouri.
And he's here tonight to go over the tax abatement information. I think at the last meeting, Justin, you had given us some information about why the employee count was down.
Right.
And I questioned, I questioned that to you a little bit, also questioned why the salaries, how the salaries could be up after making those adjustments. I guess what you had originally submitted this year said that 2017 you had 17 employees, last year it showed 18. And, but yet this year, the salaries were up about $150,000 from last year. And if you wanna go ahead and explain that to everyone, I think that would be very beneficial for Prime Inc.
I'm happy to do that. First of all, I should say, Ken knows that over the last 36 hours, I've only spoken a couple sentences, they've both been to Mayor Meyer. I had a root canal that wasn't so effective several months ago and then this dentist couldn't get me in for two more months. So, he went into my gum and sort of laterally chopped some things off yesterday morning about 9:00 AM. So, this is one of the first times I may actually need a microphone so you guys can hear me. But the reason that there's just sound coming out of one side of my mouth and I sound really weird or stranger than last time, not because I'm super nervous about the numbers here, it's because I had some very ugly surgery yesterday. I can tell you people at Prime are thrilled that I'm not able to talk. I've been able to do a sentence out yesterday or today and I saw them all waving as I left this morning, so they finally liked me around there. We provided the numbers for this year in the same manner we did last year with one exception and that is, we excluded drivers in our FTE count this year, so if anything.
FTE is full-time employee.
Full-time employee, I'm sorry. So, if anything, these numbers are likely understated for a few reasons, that being the first. And, you know, Tim and some other lawyers may go back and forth on, well, if somebody's driving and he's dispatched out of a plant there, is he really at the plant full-time? We just wanted to err on the side of saying, we're only gonna count people that sit down or are in a shop from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So, that's what the 17 FTE is. So, there's really not this mass exodus from last year to this year, it's just that last year included drivers, which we think that's fair to do, but this year we didn't because just going by the strict black letter, that's the annoying lawyer in me, I said we just wanna go who's actually physically on-site non-stop there, not operating motor vehicles elsewhere. So, if you look at that $770,000 that was filed in payroll this year relative to last year, here I guess would be a statistic I'd bring up, if you look at the FTE from last year, which was the 23 down to 17, that's a 35% reduction in FTE, just on its face. Now, please keep in mind what I just explained about the driving situation, but that 35% FTE reduction was only met with the 15% approximately reduction in payroll, 870 down to 770. The reason for that's pretty simple. One is, we hired some folks in our tractor shop that are really well-compensated mechanics. And the other reason is, and this is pretty unique to Prime, is Prime pays its folks on a very low base salary, and I mean very low. And 80 and 90% of what all employees make are based on incentives. And that incentive's based on how robust the overall company is doing and we're very fortunate that we've grown the last year and our owner likes to share in that growth. And so, it is not uncommon in a given year for payroll to increase as much as 10% a year. So, and I explained this to Ken, when you look at the diminished FTE and you say, wait a second, why didn't payroll fall off the map? Well, the reason's simple. One is, and there is some attrition indicator, some folks left. A lot of the folks that left were folks that were making 30, 35 grand. The folks that have been replaced are mechanics making, you know, $77,703, $72,439. I mean, these jobs, and here's, I don't wanna jump all over the place, but just so that you can appreciate the numbers, and again, these are W2 filed numbers. And just like we did last year where we provided you every W2, I'm happy to do that again. Cause at that point, it's just very basic additive math, right? You just hold all 17 W2s added up and that's what the math is. But if you wanna understand sort of the magic behind the math, that's it. We've got higher-paying jobs this year than last year in terms of some of the auto mechanics. And we also increased salaries somewhere between 3% and 10% on a given year just based on what's going on revenue-wise with the company. I would like to say a couple other things and then if you really wanna get into math, I've got some printouts here. One of the things I'd underscore is what I just hit on and that is, if you look at 2015, which is when I was sitting here in July, we had three folks that were at 70,000 and one that was slightly above. On this year's payroll, the 2016 fiscal year payroll, we had one that was above 100,000. We had four that were 70,000 plus and then we had another one in the mid-60s. So, if you're looking at, I would call those high incomes for this area, last year we were at three, this year we're at six. So, of the 17 that got reported, effectively what we're saying here is, one-third of those jobs are high-paying jobs. Now, high-paying is relative, but in Adams County, those six, I think it's fair to classify or qualify those as high-paying jobs. So, please be mindful of that. There's another issue I wanna touch on briefly, I had occasion to, notice how I'm starting to get a little muscle movement back? You guys are like, darn, man, I thought you really went down for the count. This'll only take a minute and then I'll let you ask your question. But one thing I asked HR was, wait a second, and we got back, and I don't mean this tongue in cheek, I said, look, we were there in July, we love the place, we wanna hire as many people as possible, what's going on here? Cause that's really an HR function at that point. Their job is to get people to apply and then bring people in the door. Well, their response to that was, look, so far 2017, we've only had six interviews at this place, six. Now, most places, it's not uncommon at all to have one job slot, you may have 50 interviews, it's not uncommon, or at least 10 or 15. And I said, well, maybe it's slow this year, what about last year? Well, last year, all of 2016, we had 20 people interviewed. And just in terms of the math on the 20, four of them, we said, you're hired. You're not only a great fit in the Decatur community, you're gonna be a great fit to the Prime family, welcome aboard. But after that, things sort of split off a little bit, three of them didn't pass a background check, which isn't the city of Decatur's fault, it's also not Prime's fault, but we've just got a methodology we go through, if you have X number of convictions or a qualitative serious conviction, we're not gonna hire you. Couple more didn't show up to their in-person interview. One accepted the interview but had to decline for family reasons, again, no harm, no foul on either side. Two, they attempted follow-up interviews and we didn't get returned phone calls. One accepted an offer but then wouldn't return our calls. One declined us. We had one reject Prime, which is fine. And then two committed to the phone interview but didn't answer the phone when called. One, we made an offer and they didn't return a call to give a response. So, here's all I'll say, this is a fantastic area, we're attempting to fill jobs, but you gotta remember, it's fair game to scrutinize the numbers and say, well, wait a second, you said X FTE and you said Y gross revenue and those numbers aren't there. Folks, one of the things we're trying to do is staff it at the FTE, we promised, we've got to have folks come in, complete the interview process and sign on with us. Now, I think in terms of collaboration and cooperativeness, there's nothing we'd like to do more than work with Mayor Meyer and getting the message out. It may be on Prime still. Last year it wasn't, we didn't get filed in Prime, that's problem solved, I think we filed it eight weeks early. I told you guys we'd file it so early, your eyes would pop, I heard Phil's eyes popped, they're almost it. So, we got it filed nice and early. The next thing we do, need to do this go-around, I think, is let folks in the community know, guys, these aren't 20 or 30,000 dollar jobs, these aren't even 40, 50,000 dollar jobs. I mean, these are 75, 80,000 dollar tractor mechanic jobs here. And Ken and I spoke on the phone about some methods that we can undertake jointly to attempt to get that word out, but, you know, we've got 17 FTE that could very well be 18. We have jobs listed on our site, I had this printed yesterday morning and we've had, you know, on average. I had this printed, uh, yesterday morning, uh, and we've had, you know, on average, maybe one interview per job. So the issue there, I think, needs to be twofold. One is, we probably, on our end, it's incumbent on us to get the word out that these aren't just jobs, they're really well-paying jobs. But, you know, I hope the pipeline in the Decatur community, uh, after we get that message out, really is such that they start to funnel us, um, a wider body of well-qualified applicants, which I think it will. I think once the word gets out that, hey, these are the jobs actually available, you know, we'll see the quality applicant pool where we can really pull the trigger on hires and boost our FTE, uh, to the promised level. But that's sort of the context behind some of the numbers. It's twofold. One is just raw math on W-2s and what they add up to and why they add up to that amount. I hope I've answered that question. If I haven't, feel free to fire away. And of course, the second point, which I anticipate, is, wait a second, the FTE that you're reporting is not the FTE that was promised, uh, years back? And that's sort of the explanation on the hiring front for why the numbers pan out the way they do at present. Um, so with that, if you folks have questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Two questions. First being, how many current jobs do you have available?
The current jobs that we have listed on our website are a tanker fleet manager, which again, I would classify as a high-paying job, a local driver, which I would classify as a medium-paying job, and a trailer tractor mechanic, which I would again classify as a high-paying job. The reason we don't have a deep roster of, in other words, we could fill two for each of these slots, is we're not having, uh, the level of interest just on the two or three or four jobs we place. Um, and we don't think it would be effective at this point to go list seven jobs when we're averaging, you know, one or two interviews, um, for these positions a month.
So with those, if you add those three to the 17, then you're up to 20 full-time employees.
Yeah.
Are you suggesting that if those are full, you would have room for more?
We, I am. And this dovetails into your point, which is a fair question. We hired a shop mechanic on February 1st of 2017. We have just called a, another fleet manager, so there's one listed and we've staffed one. A fleet manager was offered and accepted a position, uh, yesterday, Monday, April 17th. Again, this is not coordinated with my meeting here. This was, they applied back in February, March, went through the interview process, very qualified candidate. Uh, they're going to accept the position as a fleet manager, which is a high-paying job. That's an additional FTE there. And then today, I was informed by email from our HR gal that we also made an offer, uh, for a shop, uh, position, which, uh, she expects to be accepted, which would be an additional two FTE. Again, that is not linked to my trip out here. I don't, I simply asked them what's the status update.
So if those two, plus the three they have available, then we'd be at 22?
Yes, and again, well, that would be, uh...
22.
Yes, 22. Again, the only other thing I'd ask you to be mindful of is, we do have a truck count that I think technically qualifies or constitutes.
Well, that was my second question. Would we, so did we reduce that number by, well, we don't really, from last year was 20, how many of the 23? So what is that truck count?
Yeah, it was five last year.
Five.
Yeah. And I have to, I wouldn't expect it to be much different. This year it may actually be more, but I don't have the count because we did not include the count in this year's methodology. We wanted a strict black letter. This is what the document requires on its face, which is basically somebody camped out at the facility. And on that basis, you know, a driver may or may not satisfy that black letter term.
So in theory, if we can fill all those jobs that are open now, a year from now, we'd be looking at 22 with an additional...
Correct.
Three or four jobs open.
Correct. And, you know, here's the other point that we raised last year, and I hope you all found it to be true, and that is, we're very fortunate that we're growing at a clip other companies aren't growing at. And of course, the major division here in, uh, Decatur would be our tanker division. The tanker division's growing as fast as any division at Prime. So, you know, this is the industry, and this is a lot of trucking companies. Here's our trajectory. We're very fortunate that it is our trajectory, but there's never been a time where Prime said, we ain't hiring. And that's true in Springfield, which is our headquarters, but it's also true here. So what I can tell you is, if qualified applicants are out there knocking on our door, we're going to be hiring. And that applies to Decatur, that applies to any of our ancillary sites.
Questions? Okay.
You say you're hiring, okay? I wasn't here when the abatement got approved, but when you, I just, I don't even know if you were the one that came in, but if you were the one that came in, you would've came in and said, hey, we're going to add 38 jobs. This is why it's going to benefit your city. We're going to add all these jobs, you should give us an abatement because we're going to add these jobs. And then the abatement comes back and you're 50% of what you said you were going to add. I wasn't here, but to me, looking at the numbers, it looks like a lie. I mean, you could do your math two different ways, but you were all 50% of what you said you were going to be. How does that, to me, it just sets a precedent that we can go to any company, come in here, we're going to hire 100 jobs and only hire 40, and then come back and say, well, they were better paying, but it's only half of what we said we were.
Well, if you'll remember, Tyler, I had to take your grill in on this point in July. And here's what I'll, I think it's fair. Here's what I'll tell you. Here's what, quite frankly, I do want to tell you this, I'm not sure it was quite as fair. And that is, after we came here and took the heat, which we were happy to do, and we should have done, because I told you at the time, shame on us for not getting that document filed in time. We also provided to each of you a very detailed explanation on what's going on with our payroll and virtually every practice that has to do with payroll at the Decatur site. And if you look at that, Tyler, one of the things is, you'll notice, I think the average salary was about 57 grand. So if you have a bunch of companies knocking on your door saying, we're going to bring a ton of 50, 60, 70,000 dollar jobs in, I'm going to say it's probably in your interest to offer abatement. I don't know that you've got companies knocking on your door that are offering six-figure jobs like Prime is. But here's what I can tell you. We have great jobs that we bring in. The six high, um, paid positions that I indicated, the one over 100,000, four at 70, and one at 60, I'm going to say they're glad we're here, would be my, I would suspect that. And I would say that if you look at the FTE, and this is what we implored you to do in some of the underlying math and explanations was, an FTE could be anything over 19 grand. So if that's the case, if you take the 770 divided by 19, we'd be at 50 or 60 FTE right now. But our main objective is to create really high-paying jobs and keep people on the seat. And there's, there is a couple of things we can do, and this is what I talked to Ken about. One is, we'd like to see less people leave once they're hired. I think we can do a better job there. That would keep FTE anchored from year to year. Although again, there was not an exodus, it was the driver count. But the second thing is, I think this year, uh, teaming with, um, the Chamber of Commerce, we can up the FTE. Cameron and I just went through the math on why, I think it will be in the 20s. I mean, we've offered two jobs this week. Again, didn't coincide with my meeting at all, but that's certainly evidence that we didn't come in on date Y. Why about create jobs? Well, by the way, we just offered two jobs this week.
Did your business file change from when you came in and had the abatement? Obviously, you were planning on hiring 38, but now you're saying, well, we want higher paying jobs. I mean, you're...
Oh, no, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that the goal is to create 38 jobs at the Decatur site that are really high-paying jobs. There's nothing we would like more than to have underestimated what the payroll's going to be. Because again, if you're stuck on an FTE number, what I'm going to submit to you are, there are many companies that will come knocking on the door asking for abatements, and they'll say, here's the FTE number we're going to create, and many of those jobs will be 20 or 25,000 dollar jobs. Now, there's nothing wrong with that, because a job created is a job created. But what I'm saying is, please don't treat, you know, that red apple with Prime's green apple, which is a job that's much, uh, higher compensated. I don't consider, I don't know if you do, I don't consider a FTE job at 20,000 the same as a 75,000 dollar job.
I don't either, but I'm just saying, if you were going to hire 75,000 dollar jobs, I think you would've said that you weren't going to hire 38 of them, you were going to hire 20 of them.
No, the goal, again, the goal is something.
I think the math is changing. When you're coming here and selling me, you're selling me math.
No, no.
You're changing the number and trying to sell like a sales pitch.
No, there's no sales pitch needed.
And that's all you just did with the sales pitch.
It's not a sales pitch, because there's really no way to sell objective W-2 math.
You just did. You just used the math to sell it, to make it look better.
If you guys think I'm here to sell, you're off. I mean, if I wanted to sell, I'd call in and make a sales pitch. Just what I'm saying is, the nice thing is, when you don't have to really mess with the numbers too much, is I can show up face-to-face with W-2 data that I've got, explain what the FTE is, explain why it's lower than its promise. That's not really a sales pitch, it's an explanation on where we're at. And again, I would hope that, because your terms, which are somewhat inflammatory, I mean, you're saying you think we showed up a few years ago and lied. You know, part of what's being in a, that's, those were your words, you know, when you're in a cooperative business relationship, again, what Prime wants to do is say, we love the community, which we do, and we're here to create as many high-paying jobs as possible. There's really no wizardry or math or, you know, behind-the-scenes stuff going on. They said we want to create 38 high-paying jobs. The estimate at the time was, the 38 jobs would have that level of payroll. You know, now we're at FTE 17, and I'm providing you an explanation on why that is. You're saying, are there really jobs that can't be filled? I'm saying, well, we just made two offers this week. So that's sales pitch.
Just, I think the problem is, though, that 38 was supposed to be completed by the end of 2011.
Sure.
We understand, okay, you're working on it, you're trying to fill those spots. But we're, I think, secure beyond that point. I think also, that that number 38 wasn't just pulled out of the air. That's how many drivers, Rouen, Rouen?
Yes.
That's how many drivers they had.
It was, it was based on, and again, this gets complicated.
It was based on the amount of drivers that Rouen had.
This would've gone back to 2010, I believe, or maybe 2009, um, in terms of them mapping out the landscape on, with Rouen leaving, what mix of that was going to be in-house and driver. You know, have circumstance changed over the last seven years? They've changed, but not in the fact that we don't think we can hire 38 FTE. I mean, if you heard what I said a moment ago, we had 20 total interviews last year. You know, I'm not sure to what extent that's a function of Prime, but here's one thing I can tell you. You can't get to 38 FTE if there aren't 21 people that are knocking on the door wanting a job. And based on what we've seen this year with only six interviews, one explanatory factor on why we won't get there is, there aren't the applicants required to fill those positions. That is...
Or the pay is not high enough to fill the position for the job that you're offering.
Well, I just told you...
Because they're making more money than we're else.
I don't know that you can make that pitch with what I've just told you.
Like, you told me the numbers, but if you paid, I own my own business too, but if you paid a high wage, they're going to come.
Sure.
But obviously, your wage isn't as high as what the other guy's paying, that they can go make somewhere else. Otherwise, they'll get you.
Where would you base that statement on?
Well...
Because I showed you the, I showed you the layout.
I think the statement on is, okay, if you're the highest-paying job, they should all be coming to you, shouldn't they? Why don't they want to come work for your business? If I was a mechanic and you were paid 75,000 and that's the best I can make, I'm going to come knocking at your door.
Right, and...
And you're telling me that your rate is so high that they should be pounding, beating my door down, but why aren't they beating your door down? Your rate must not be as high as what it's...
It's a good question. What I can tell you is, if you look at the folks making 77,700, 72,400, 101,000, $9, uh, 71,400, and 71,700, I'd say they're pleased with their salaries.
Well, I'm sure they are.
And, well, and so we're not advertising new jobs that are comparable titles that are 20 and 30,000 dollar jobs. That wouldn't make any sense. In other words, we have a fleet manager job advertised here. That's a 60, 70, 80,000 dollar job started. So, you know, I would ask you, why is that, that job, which is listed at 60 or 70 or 80,000 dollars, not being filled? And you're saying it's because you're not paying enough.
Well, wouldn't you have to pay more? I mean, you're an attorney, right?
Well, yeah, what I'm asking you is, we've got a 60, 70, 80,000 dollar job listed here, and it, which is three times what the average individual in the city makes. And I'm asking you why we only have a couple of interviews for that position. Advocate, not even interviews, application. That'd be my question to you, Tyler.
Did I, Dan, you got a comment?
I just, I've been looking at folks, and I do have a question. He's saying that job listed at 50, 70, or 80,000 dollars. That's a big difference. Which one is?
Well, I mean, yeah, sure, it would be based on experience, right? If somebody's a fleet manager with 20 years' experience, they're going to be 80,000 dollars. Somebody first out of college, 60. The point is, we have every intention to offer really well-paying jobs here. And if what we've done historically is what we're doing this year.
Go ahead.
I'm good. I'm not, I'm good.
Okay, so is counsel ready to make a decision here? If I could, should I do a roll call vote, preferably Phyllis, or should I just do a yea and a?
Yeah, just a motion whether they are substantially compliant.
The question on the, uh, the paper, yeah, we've reviewed the following CF1 and find that the property owner is in substantial compliance, the property owner is not in substantial compliance, or other, and then they have to specify. So for us, I think it's the is or is not in substantial compliance. So all those in, well, do I have a motion to go one way or the other? I'd still come back to that word substantial compliance, that term. To me, substantial compliance would be very close to that number of full-time employees promised. So therefore, I would say they, I would make a motion, they are not in substantial compliance. I have a motion and a second, that, uh, Prime Inc. is not in substantial compliance with their CF1 form. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry.
Thank you.
Yep. And you can apply again next year.
Will do.
Yes. All right, moving on to the next thing on the agenda. Melissa, let's talk about a grant that's out there for pedestrian alleys and the possibility of us, uh, the, with the Schaefer Building coming down, not becoming a parking lot, the alleyway that kind of connects that to Second Street would behoove us, I believe, to make that a pedestrian alley rather than a motor vehicle alley. Really, the only, there's a couple of people that use it now for unloading, and I think that we could arrange other means for them to get to their destination. And explain the grant, and I think what we were looking for tonight is maybe a motion to make that a pedestrian alley, subject to her obtaining this grant. So go ahead.
OSHA, the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs, has a quick impact place-based grant available. This grant's only going to be open for about 15 business days. It is due this Friday. The grant request amount has to be between 2,500 and 5,000 dollars. It's kind of a fun grant. They're asking you to do something place-based, it will be fun, unique, different for your community. And since we've talked a lot about changing some of the alleys to pedestrian walkways, it kind of came to the top with requirements of this grant. Again, the proposal in the grant would be for the alley between Woodwings and the Home Place to close, to restrict that to pedestrian traffic only. And the fun part about it, which we spend the majority of the money on, would be to hire an artist to do some kind of art in that alley. With the thought that that would be our art alley, maybe some other artists would come in and put some other elements in there someday. So, um, I guess my request would be, would it be okay to apply for this grant and indicate that the alley would be changed pedestrian, subject to being awarded the grant?
Questions?
The alley that Sherwin-Williams currently owns, or...
Well, Sherwin-Williams does use that alley. They actually come off of it.
They come our street.
Come all the way through that alley, and I watched him do it yesterday, and he has about that much clearance on both sides. And then he crosses Second, continues on through that alley.
Right.
I've spoken to the four business owners, I've spoken, you've spoken to Woodwings, I've spoken to Sherry at the Home Place, we've spoken to the First Response Store, and spoken to Sherwin-Williams. On the own, we think we can make an accommodation for Woodwings, as that's their only place, aside from Second Street, to unload, and we can whip that out. Sherwin, the employees at Sherwin-Williams yesterday let me know that there was no other option for their semi to pull.
That's a problem.
It's a sticky point, and-
Yeah, we're gonna do it all the way around to Third Street and come back in?
I don't think they can get in on Third Street, the alley.
Oh.
They come in, they come through and come the alley, and then they can-
They can't make the turn up, yeah.
No, and, and then they, he can maneuver so that he delivers fine, and then go on out to Third Street.
Can we do it through a different alley, or does it have to be that one?
Well, that one makes the most sense with us bringing down the Schaefer Building, where we're gonna put a parking lot there. We're trying to connect that app, that parking lot to downtown is the intention. The next alley we would want to do it to would be the one beside Sherwin-Williams.
But we need to, they gotta get paint to them somehow.
I know.
That's how-
Can-
Can they come up Madison?
Come up Madison and come in that alley? Is there enough to make a turn?
Do we, do we have to close it and make it pedestrian to get the grant?
It's not a requirement under the grant, again, the thought was, because the Schaefer Building's coming down, that would be a good opportunity to get people to walk through the pedestrian alley onto Second Street. Adding the art element is kind of what this grant is all about. We would like to add an art element that kind of expands and interactive from one of the walls, and so, it would have to be closed down if there couldn't be any vehicular traffic going through. It's not a requirement, but we know that the alley is popular, it's been a part of the Madison Street proposal, and the Second Street proposal.
Do you have any idea how many trucks deliver to Sherwin-Williams in a week?
One.
One time a week?
That I was told yesterday.
But they need to be able to deliver.
Well, Sherwin-Williams, I mean, they need to determine, the truck driver needs to determine, would, like, Second Street to Madison and going in that alley, would that There's, there's more space to make a turn on Madison.
I just can't believe they can't get in another way.
If they get on the Third, if they can get on the Third Street, they can get in there, because that's how they go out. So, it would mean coming in on Third from the south.
Off of Adams.
Off of Adams Street.
The problem of the candidate is when he comes in on Third, he's facing the wrong lane.
Yeah, yeah.
He can't, he can't turn to get the truck.
There's cars parked in there.
So, when he comes in, he's facing Third Street, so when he goes, he can go out on Third, and then into the parking lot, there's no way.
How do they deliver beer to two brothers?
There's cars parked.
How do they deliver beer to two brothers?
They park on Third Street.
I mean, unless they start doling that, but it's-
I mean, I love this idea, I just don't want it to negatively impact the business.
The alley has to be designated, and, and go for the-
The grant application needs to know that this isn't okay, that I'm, we're not just proposing something that's not, that we've been talked about, or, I don't, I don't want to do anything that's going to disrupt the downtown business, but this is something that has been in our community.
It's just, there needs to be an alternative for the truck driver, for sure, anyway.
If I could speak with Sherwin-Williams tomorrow and come up with another alternative plan for them to find a means of unloading their truck one time a week?
Then I'm-
Could I, could I have a motion to go after this grant, subject to that?
Throw motion.
I don't know if I can make that happen or not, but I can sure try. And I can't imagine that one time a week, that that semi driver couldn't pull on that, and that one time, one time a week, they couldn't stop traffic for him to back out on Third Street and leave.
Happens at the Democrat all the time.
Happens at the Democrat all the time, huh?
Make that turn in the out there.
Anyone who's ever worked in any, any manufacturing company, the semis have to be able to back up.
And they not?
He could, he could stop on Third Street, and he could back into that parking lot, if he's a truck driver. Sorry, that's just my opinion. But, subject to me being able to clock him into it, could I have that motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, that if you, if you think that the business would be cooperating with a different means of delivery.
Okay, how about a motion?
I'll make a motion.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
I'll see what I can get done tomorrow. If I can't get it done, we won't do it, so. Um, next is kind of a, hard thing to figure out.
No.
Adams County Sheriff, Shane Reckaway, called a meeting with myself, a member of the Mayor of Burns, some of the elected officials from Monroe, Geneva, there were some firefighters, county council members, county commissioner, and it was in reference to responding to non-emergency 911 calls. And Craig was there, yeah.
So was Tim Baker.
Well, he wasn't at the first one. You and I went to the first meeting. And it was in reference to non-emergency 911 calls, and how that count is growing, but how their, uh, funding source to fund 911 is decreasing. And, I made some proposals that everyone's gonna have to pay a little bit more to continue the 911 services. And, it was kind of pointed toward the municipalities paying more than those who live in the rural areas, primarily because that's where more of the calls come from, and that's where more of the population base is. However, when, we, we kind of think that the information that was given to us, be careful how I say this, Tim.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, strike that. However, before I present it to council, that we want to jump on board and, and totally supporting this, I want to make sure that it's the right thing for the citizens of Decatur. Tim, jump in, please.
Well, in, in the mayor's office since last week, Ken asked me to sit in, and I appreciate the fact that Craig was there, and so was Craig, on behalf of the city, and Sheriff Reckaway obviously spent a lot of time kind of compiling information, which I appreciate, and I think he's trying to point out there are issues that he feels need to be addressed sooner than later. Long and short of it is, the, the problem seems to be that the dispatchers are handling a lot of non-emergency calls, that is, expanding their workload to the point that either the workload has to be reduced some way, or additional staffing is going to be needed. So, I think the sheriff's approach was to try to reduce the workload and minimize additional staffing, at least initially. He proposed doing that by subscribing to some software that's put out by Sun Guard, that would be a computer-aided dispatching capacity, and it would automatically handle certain things that the dispatchers currently do now, and it would reduce their workload, and that would then reduce the number of people that would have to be hired, probably one additional dispatcher initially, but down the line, he seemed to think that that could very well require additional staffing at a later time. The cost of that initial expenditure for software was, I-
Three hundred and seven thousand?
Something like that, but the, then there's a cost breakdown on an annual basis.
Right.
And, that was for, for the annual basis, it was another three hundred and one thousand, that eighty-two thousand, of which would be the city's share. It was a little confusing with all the figures, you know, a lot of questions posed. As I understand it, and Craig can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but apparently, a lot of non-emergency calls that the dispatchers deal with are calls in to dispatch that a police officer's pulling somebody over, or police officers completed a task, or is going somewhere for some reason. And, and every time that call goes into dispatch, they have to respond to it, and then they have to log it in. Is that correct, Greg?
Yes, and it also would be saved from the other end of that, say, the public calling in, or, say, a fat, or something.
Right.
Not just what we did, but what everybody's-
But, they, they treat non-emergency calls. So, you know, the, the sheriff said, "Look, we either need to reduce the workload of our existing staff, we need to increase staff, or we need to do something-"
We can have less services.
Right. Or, we cut back services.
Right.
Okay?
It was a four-hour meeting, too.
Yes. And, there were a lot of questions raised by the municipalities, you know, in part because I think the feeling was, at least among a number of people at the meeting, that, you know, why isn't this a county responsibility anyway? And we're part of the county, so aren't we paying our share already, or are we being asked to pay again? And the sheriff made it clear that this wasn't double taxation, and that there seems to be a whole lot of different ways that this is being handled statewide. There's no uniform way that it's done. There are some communities that do enter into inter-local agreements with counties and pay for these services, there are others that don't. Sometimes you have municipalities that are actually doing the dispatching, and the county pays for that to be done through the city. And I think that's actually the case over in Bluffton and Wells County. But, if you look at the source of funding, the sources of funding, that the county has at its disposal right now, it has a, a budget of around a million dollars for its dispatching. About four hundred thousand of that comes from 911 fees that you pay on your phone bills, whether it's your landline or a cellphone, if you levy the bill, there's a dollar charge for every phone line, okay? So, that all goes to the county, because they're providing, they're the primary dispatching service within the community, in our county. They also receive about four hundred eighty-some thousand from the local option income tax that's related to safety services that they, the county's using towards that budget, and then they fill the gap with general fund revenues of about two hundred and ten thousand. So, that's how they're currently funding it. And basically, what the sheriff was saying is, we're gonna have this one-time cost to put in the system, and then we're looking at probably another three hundred thousand a year to maintain the system and add additional staffing to get us to a point where we should be. You know, and, and I think some of the smaller communities were really concerned about, well, how can they come up with the money to fund that? And what happens if they don't? And, you know, the sheriff says, "Well, literally, the, the only thing that the county has to do is to actually handle actual emergency calls." So, if it's a non-emergency call, basically what they could do is just say, "We're, you know, sorry, you're calling the wrong number, here's the number you need to call." You know, and, so, I don't know if there's a good solution to this, because it sounds like there's, it's gonna cost money no matter how you do it. Craig, you can ask-
At the, at the end of the meeting, we came to a consensus that the best thing to do was get a panel of police officers, fire, representation throughout the county, instead of putting Sheriff Reckaway in the crosshairs, again, we're gonna get a panel to come up with some ideas on how we're gonna take care of this. One of the things that's talked about was training, meaning that if somebody does call into the 911 center, they move them over to a telephone line and forward it on to, let's say, Decatur's dispatch. You got a dog running around in the yard, you know, these kind of non-emergency things. So, the consensus was, we'll come to, we'll, we'll get a panel together of these people, and then, and, until they get a plan, not present to this board again.
Yeah, the, the issue is, and I think where the rub occurs, is that the sheriff recognizes that we're soon gonna be approaching the development of budgets, and, and he's saying this really needs to be done this year. A lot of the, the municipalities and attendants say, "Well, we've already budgeted this year, the early days we could do anything, would be next year." So, I think he's trying to push everybody towards getting that in place for next year, so-
Was a dollar figure suggested?
Yeah, for, for the ongoing expense for the city would be eighty-two thousand a year.
Additional.
Additional. Plus the one-time expenditure to-
Put in place.
Put in place the, and that, that eighty-two thousand, most likely, is gonna rise in a couple of years to probably somewhere around a hundred and twenty thousand, I think he's-
Hundred and twenty-two. Do you have a comment, Greg?
I, I was, I was just gonna say, that, that's in present term. Down the road, it's gonna-
It's gonna grow.
This isn't gonna be a one-time-
And the rea, and the only reason we're really bringing this up tonight is to let council know that we need to be considering the fact that we may be, we may have to budget money in the future for-
And all of us enjoy the fact, I shouldn't say enjoy, but appreciate that we hit 911, and they show up, whoever day is. So, we need to obviously be at the table in the discussions.
Exactly. In that pamphlet, Tim, they're saying it's gonna cost the city eighty thousand dollars a year, is what they're averaging.
Right off the get-go.
Is the county gonna be paying more per year, too?
Well, and, and, okay.
I mean, I was just-
Here's, here's the, yeah, the, of that three hundred thousand, they broke it down by, based on population. So, they said, they showed the county, Adams County's share to be a hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and three dollars. They showed Decatur's share eighty-two thousand, eighty dollars. Burn, thirty-five, one oh five, Geneva, eleven, three eighty-two, and Monroe, seventy-three, ninety-nine, okay? The issue, and the question that, that I think a lot of us had was-
Listen close, this is the part I'm-
Okay. This is new money that the municipalities would have to pay.
Right, and they're-
But, are, are they charging the nineteen thousand residents of Adams County, who live in the unincorporated areas, an additional amount as well? Where does that hundred and sixty-five thousand get paid from?
Well, and is this hundred and fifty-five thousand on top of the two hundred thousand that comes out of the general fund now, or is, did their price get reduced?
That's, we asked that question. No, that's, and I frankly wasn't real sure I understood the answer. I think what Shane was saying is that that would be in addition to what they're paying, but I didn't get, the way he responded to it, I wasn't real sure.
So, it's something we need to think about, and get somebody on-
Yeah, you know, in the, in the end, I mean, I, I think everybody wants to try to find a way that it's fair and equitable to everyone. But I think the, the emphasis was that because a lot of the non-emergency calls are originating more so from the municipalities, that I got the impression that they were looking for the municipalities to pay more.
So, that's all, there's nothing we need to act on, that I, I just want, we just want to make it aware that this is something we may have to budget for down the road, and that hopefully we can come to a fair and good conclusion to it all, and be able to, like Matt said, not like using 911, but appreciate the fact that we have that service. That's all I had on my agenda. On the mayor's report tonight, I want to welcome a new staff member that will be starting with us next week. You all know that Roger's gonna be stepping down at the end of May from being the superintendent of building and zoning, and tonight I want to introduce Kurt Whitty as our new superintendent of building and zoning. His present employer is NTA out of Napanee, and he works there as a field auditor. Prior to working at NTA, he was employed at All American Homes for twenty- Prior to working at NTA, he was employed at All American Homes for twenty-three years as an engineering and quantity control manager. He's a Belmont High School graduate, also graduated with an associate degree from ITT Technical Institute in Architectural Engineering Technology. He's also an army veteran. He's already certified in many of the building code, Roger helped me out, ICC...
Yeah, International Code Council.
Building code, I mean, the building code part of the job is gonna be relatively easy, I think, for Kurt. He's gonna have to learn the zoning side of it, which...
Roger's not a lifetime...
But Kurt's a lifelong resident of Adams County, I believe, and Decatur, and I think he's gonna replace Roger very well. So, welcome to the city of Decatur. Kurt, we appreciate it. I'll save any words for Roger for a couple more meetings.
Then I'll go in.
Nah, a couple more meetings, yeah. Phyllis?
We'll need to sort him in, hopefully, because he's at Point Line.
Yeah, we'll need to swear you in Monday. Is that when we can do it, Monday?
We can do it Monday, or whenever Roger retires, he would take it.
Okay, I understand that. All right. That's all I had, department heads. Greg, you have anything this evening?
Uh, just, uh, playing... Is doing well.
Good.
He's been on the second shift, now he's getting his fill and all the shit.
Good, good. Dan?
None.
Jim? You have any good words to say about our fire chief?
He's covering, doing well.
Yep, good. Roger?
Well, I'm looking forward to Kurt and...
Probably.
Going through the process, but he...
Yep. Kurt, you got anything?
I'm ready to roll up my sleeves.
There you go. Jeremy?
Standing up in the last three hours.
I hear ya, I hear ya. Ann? Bill?
No.
Melissa?
Hey, you're gonna ask her.
Council members?
Do we need to talk about that sidewalk thing you must have did?
Oh, gosh, yes, sir. We're not done yet. We still have another half an hour, Bob.
Yeah, we can read the law.
Thank you.
Hey, I don't want to delay it.
That wasn't written on, yeah, wasn't written on my agenda, but... Okay, earlier this evening in the Board of Works meeting, we discussed street lighting for First Street, excuse me, Monroe Street. We had, at our last meeting, budgeted money to do from the bridge to First Street, and then wrapping around the corner on First Street with new streetlights, nice decorative-looking streetlights, and sidewalks. Long story short, Jeremy's put, took a nice sharp pencil and got, doing some calculating, realized that we should be able to do the second block between First and Second Street, and still be real close to having that, the money that's needed to budget that. In addition to that, with the Schaefer building coming down, that funding was originally set up to come from our rainy day fund. We had two hundred and fifty thousand dollars set aside in the rainy day fund to take down the Schaefer building. The way Tim is setting up the revolving loan fund to do this, that money will have to come from our CEDAT fund rather than the rainy day fund. So, what we're going to, what I'm proposing this evening is that we use fifty thousand dollars of CEDAT funds that was designated for our facade grants this year, and a hundred thousand dollars of our CEDAT funds that was designated for the Madison Street renovation this year, totaling a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and move those into the rainy day fund, and move the money for the Schaefer demolition from the rainy day fund into the CEDAT fund, okay? Now, there's a difference there, that we had two hundred and fifty thousand dollars set aside in the rainy day fund for Schaefer. We're only gonna use a hundred and fifty thousand of that rainy day fund money. We still are gonna need another hundred and twenty-five thousand to fill our obligation with bigs from the CEDAT fund. But we don't have anything budgeted for 2017 in the CEDAT fund that we could use, so we're gonna tap our, what's it called, Tim? The CEDAT general fund?
Unappropriated.
Unappropriated CEDAT funds, which will require a...
Additional appropriation.
Additional appropriation. To get that money out, it'll be a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of additional CEDAT funds that we'll have to appropriate for the Schaefer out of CEDAT. Now, having said that, we started with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the rainy day fund, we're moving around a hundred and fifty thousand, that leaves a hundred thousand dollars left over in the rainy day fund that we haven't used. And I proposed to the Board of Works this evening, and they were good with it, and that's why we're bringing it up at council tonight, to use that one hundred thousand dollars left over in the rainy day fund to finish off the third block of streetlights on Monroe Street. Now, whether or not that makes any sense whatsoever to you media folks over there, I think the council members, they were here when we discussed it, they all understand it, so for the sake of time, and this room being very warm, if anyone has any discussion or questions, and if not, proceed as will.
I make a motion to proceed as proposed, would it be?
Second. I have a motion and a second to use the extra hundred thousand dollars from the rainy day fund that was designated for the Schaefer building, which will now be funded from CEDAT, go toward the streetlights on Monroe Street. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There, that didn't take so long, that wasn't a half an hour, was it, Bob?
It's gonna be three blocks?
We are gonna get all three blocks done this year, streetlights and sidewalks.
For total?
Pardon?
Four of them.
Three blocks of Monroe Street.
Four of them now.
Oh! Well, we don't have anything here. Approximately, uh...
Yeah, go back there.
I thought two hundred, around two hundred.
About two hundred.
Yeah, we had a hundred and fifty set aside, so... Now, that's all I have. Now, council members, any comments this evening? Tim?
I would like for the council to approve the agreement with Barnes Thunberg to allow Tom Pittman to continue to assist on getting this revolving loan set up so that we can transfer funds. The costs would range between three and five thousand dollars, depending upon the time that he has in it, but he's been very willing to allow me to do as much work on my end as possible to keep his costs down.
I'll make a motion to approve that agreement, and the three to five thousand dollar...
Which fund?
Which fund?
Are we gonna pay it?
Is there, is there money in the lawyer fund? Paid out of, paid out of there for now, and if we have to do an additional later on, then we could...
I have a legal. I have a motion.
Legal fund.
Second. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Thank you. Phyllis, do you have anything this evening?
Uh, we won't be working on budgets soon, so...
Hear that, department heads?
Department heads.
Did you have anything else, Tim? I'm sorry, I kinda cut you off there. Okay. Comments from the public? Thank you for the cookies this evening, Mr. Becker.
Very good.
Motion to pay claims? I have a motion to pay the claims. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn. All in favor? A second. Is that a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same?